One, thank you for your patience as we completed our closed session. I would like to call this meeting to order. Today's date is Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the regular meeting of the governing board of the San Marcos Unified School District. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. The San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education meeting is a business meeting of the board held in public. While we welcome and encourage public participation, the expected behavior is that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly fashion. Only the person recognized by the board president may speak. While the member of that pub of the public is speaking, members of the audience must not yell or speak out regardless of whether you agree or disagree. While public comment is in progress, if you speak out, you're out of order and will be asked to leave. As adults participating in a public meeting, we need to model civility and to our children and students, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. Just a reminder of our mission statement, the San Marcos Unified School District is an innovative and collaborative community providing an unparalleled educational experience through an engaging and supportive environment. All of our students are challenged, inspired, and poised to excel. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. Hey. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? And I'll second. Moved by Member Carlson, seconded by Member Ahmad to approve the agenda as presented. Student Board members, please say your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Report of action taken in closed session. Tonight, the board met in closed session and discussed student expulsion case number zero-two dash twenty-five dot twenty-six. No action was taken. Next, the board discussed matters pertaining to public employee employment, transfer, appointment, discipline, dismissal, release, evaluation, and reassignment. So in closed session today, by motion of Member Ahmad and seconded by Member Herrick, the board approved the settlement agreement and release of certified employee number three-three-five-one-one-eight effective June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-six by the following vote: ayes, Member Carlson, Member Martine, Member Ahmad, Member Herrick, and Member Mium. No nays and no abstaining. Okay. All right. Reports by student board members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Inara Ahmad. I'm the San Marcos High School Student Board rep, and I'm going to share what our school has been up to. To start off with my presentation topics, I'll be talking about what's going on around campus, student highlights, staff highlights, sports, and what's coming up. To start off with the round campus, we had our Disco Bowl week, which is our week leading up to our infamous game against Mission Hills with a fun competition held at Chick-fil-A to see who could eat the most at Chick-fil-A. It was really fun. We had a whole week where we had a bunch of school spirit brought together. We had a bunch of fun challenges and days to eat as much Chick-fil-A as we possibly could. Next, we have an FFA update. Our FFA officers competed in the Southern Region opening and closing contests. They placed fifth in the officer team division, and Charlie Stone was awarded the Outstanding Secretary Award. And then we had also our link crew conference, which was for the first time ever held at San Marcos High School, connecting multiple schools within the program. Technical difficulties. Yeah.
That okay?
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to student highlights, we have our San Marcos High School Choir, which on Veterans Day, they celebrated our veterans with music at the San Marcos Veterans Day Ceremony. Next, we have our staff highlights. We wanted to highlight Ms. Brown, an English teacher and mock trial coach at our high school. She's an amazing teacher who always has her door open and is supportive to all students. Next, sports, we had our Disco Bowl. We did lose, but it was all in fun. And our Blue Crew did an amazing job at hyping up our student section and enjoying our time at the game. And then our boys' water polo finished their very eventful season. And then what's coming up, we have our SMHS Drama Department, An Ideal Husband. Our show dates are November fourteenth at five-thirty PM, eleven fifteen at one PM, and six PM. Thank you.
Hi, welcome. My name is Madison Zara-Sua, and I'm the Mission Hills Student Board Representative. To start, I want to thank our veterans, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Powell, our NJRATC program teacher, who is also a Navy veteran. It's not working.
It's just stuck on this bit. Let's try it. There we go.
Okay, to start, I wanted to give a shout out to Mission because we won the Discovery Bowl and the Chick-fil-A Challenge this year. We had a great pep rally and a great grow crowd turnout. We also had a spirit week to get everybody engaged that couldn't make it to the game or support the Chick-fil-A Challenge to really raise our school community. We also wanted to thank San Marcos for keeping the tradition alive. Next, we have our Drama and Band Department. Our Drama Department had a successful, and then there were none a production. They had a lot of hard work and preparation to make the show successful. Our band also recently went to Utah, and they broke multiple school records, and they're super grateful for the band community and how big the program is expanding. And coming up, they have their CSBC SoCal Championship. Next, we have our Girls Golf Team. This year, they have one varsity team, an A-string and a B-string, and it has been the best season that Mission Hills Girls Golf has seen in a long time. They've gone to CIF with multiple players going into day two of CIFs. We also had our top player, Jessica Hudson, commit to Cal State Fullerton. Our ASB program put on an ofrenda for Dia de los Muertos through our Diversity Commission. We also started a new program this month called Grizzlies of the Den, where different musicians, athletes, and leaders go to younger schools for outreach and bringing our mission community into those schools. So they recently went to Twin Oaks for Red Ribbon Week and Double Peak for the Turkey Trot. Our upcoming events are Gratitude Week. We're starting our annual Adopt a Family donations in collaboration with Twin Oaks, San Marcos, and Paloma Elementary. We also have a canned food drive, so students can get community service hours for the clubs or programs that they're in. Mission versus Cathedral is also this Friday at seven fifteen in Open Division semifinals. The theme is neon, and we hope to see you there. Thank you and have a great fall break.
Thank you, Inara and Maddie. I always enjoy your presentations. I especially love the little bit of a school tension. It's okay, it's all good. All right, communication session. Per education code three-five-one-four-five dot five and government code five-four-nine-five-four-dot-three, members of the public have the opportunity to provide public comment on any agenda item as well as any non-agenda item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Bylaw nine-three-two-three, individual speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item, except for our union representatives who will have five minutes. In accordance with Board Bylaw nine-three-two-three, public comments will be limited to twenty minutes per topic. Per the Brown Act, members of the board are very limited in their ability to respond to statements or questions made during public comment. Unless an item has been placed on the published agenda, there shall be no deliberation or action taken. The board may, one, acknowledge receipt of that information, report, and comment; two, refer the staff to further study; or, three, refer the matter to the next agenda. A recording is made of all open sessions of the governing board. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you in advance for helping us conduct this meeting respectfully. Suzy, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. And Eddie Newman?
Good evening, board members. My name is Eddie Vaughn Newman. On September eighth, I was kicked out of the office at Double Peak. I hadn't disrupted anything. I was just a dad waiting quietly to pick up my kids. Weeks later, I was told that my behavior constituted a material disturbance under ed code four-four-eight-one-one, which is a misdemeanor offense. In later discussions, I was informed that even using the restroom, asking a non-urgent question, or sitting in the office without an urgent appointment could all be considered material disturbances, according to the district. If this sounds absurd, it's because, quite frankly, it is. When I went to HR hoping for help, I was instead hit with a communication restriction and accused of sending emails harassing in nature. My so-called harassment, following up with one-hundred-and-twenty-five emails over forty-three days, trying to get this resolved before I began medical treatment for stress-related illness. Under California law, harassment means willful conduct that seriously harms, harasses, or serves no legitimate purpose. My communications were the exact opposite, focused on policy, purposeful and relevant, directed at every proper administrative channel. They met none of the statutory elements for harassment. So I asked myself, if asking questions is harassment and sitting quietly is a misdemeanor, what's next? So I called the district's bluff. I asked plainly, either charge me criminally, or so I can have due process in court, or acknowledge my actions are lawful. Of course, they've done neither because they know the accusations will not stand up in court. When a district uses criminal statutes loosely and without due process, it undermines the rule of law itself because laws are meant to protect fairness, not to be used as tools of fear. I researched what a real material disturbance would be, and I found in Castro v. Supreme Court, adults organized students to leave campus during the and form a protest. In Obina v. LAUSD, a parent made repeated violent threats and sent photos of himself with weapons. To claim that my waiting quietly meets the same threshold is a gross misapplication of the law. The district keeps hanging these legal threats over my head, and it feels strategic, meant to keep me afraid instead of engaged as a partner. So what does resolution look like? Acknowledging the truth if my actions were lawful or unlawful. Establishing clear office policy without misusing ed code or criminal language. Ending the practice of legal intimidation and seeking or invoking or accusing without evidence of parents. Conduct a corrective review to ensure administration and HR follow the law properly and consistently. My son, Odin, says, "Why tell kids to show leadership when you're not?" It should not be a parent risking legal jeopardy to get straight answers. Instead, it should be a healthy relationship with the district and a genuine partnership with parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. I know you've been working with the district personnel, and I would encourage you to continue doing so. Hopefully, we can find a resolution to this. Thank you, though. All right. Any other speakers?
Gretchen Foster.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gretchen Foster, and I am reading a statement on behalf of my daughter Kate Foster, who could not be here because she's at an FFA speaking competition right now. Kate is an active member of FFA, proudly serving her second year as San Marcos High School FFA President and as the Regional Vice President, representing over eighteen thousand members across Southern California. I am here tonight to urge you to keep the floral design program within the agricultural pathway because it is so much more than just a class. The program builds leaders. It teaches real-world, hands-on skills that prepare students for their futures, skills like financial management, customer relations, problem-solving, and leadership. In the floral classroom, students don't just create arrangements, they calculate cost. They manage clients. They learn entrepreneurship, agricultural science, and agribusiness. They are gaining skills that translate directly into the workforce and into life. As a student, Kate has seen firsthand how this program transforms lives. It gives even the quietest, most introverted student the confidence to step up, compete, and lead. It builds communication, creativity, and career readiness that no traditional business class can replicate. Agricultural education stands on a three-ring model: classroom instruction, FFA leadership, and supervised agricultural experience. While many people see livestock projects at the Del Mar Fair, few see hard-working students whose passion lies in horticulture. Why should students who love plants and floral design be forced to take animal or veterinary science just to be able to stay in FFA? It is unfair to ask them to choose between their passions and their opportunities for scholarships, leadership, and personal growth. Members of the board, I urge you to recognize the students who thrive in horticulture, the ones who want a VAPA that aligns with their agricultural interest. The floral design pathway embodies academic rigor, business principles, and agriculture relevance. By keeping floral design and agriculture, you are not only preserving a class, you are investing in a future workforce and the future leaders of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Paola Soto. And we have interpretation, so it'll be set for six minutes.
Buenas tardes, Presidente Akmar, estimados miembros de la mesa directiva, miembros del consejo, y Dr. Johnson. Mi nombre es Paula Soto, y soy miembro del comité consultivo de aprendices de inglés de nuestro distrito. En representación de la escuela secundaria San Marcos, mi hijo Gabriel está en el séptimo grado en la escuela secundaria San Marcos, y yo estoy tomando clases de inglés en la escuela para adultos de San Marcos.
Good evening, President Ahmad, esteemed members of the board, members of cabinet, and Dr. Johnson. My name is Paola Soto, and I am the proud member of our district's English Learner Advisory Committee, representing San Marcos Middle School. My son Gabriel is currently a seventh grader at San Marcos Middle School, and I am currently taking English classes through the San Marcos Adult School.
Esta noche me acompaña como intérprete la señorita Emery Escobedo, una estudiante de la escuela preparatoria San Marcos, que está tomando las clases de interpretación y traducción, de las cuales se graduará con un certificado de Cal State San Marcos, verdaderamente preparada para el futuro.
Interpreting for me this evening is Emiret Escobedo, a student at San Marcos High School, taking the interpreting and translating classes, from which she will graduate with a certificate from Cal State San Marcos, truly future-ready.
Uno de los objetivos de nuestro comité DILAC este año es asistir a las reuniones de la mesa directiva del distrito y compartir con ustedes lo que estamos aprendiendo, en lo que nos estamos concentrando durante nuestras reuniones de DILAC.
One of the goals for our DILAC committee this year is to attend board meetings and share with you what we are currently learning and focusing on during our DILAC meetings.
Este año hemos tenido dos reuniones en las que hemos conocido el porcentaje de estudiantes bilingües emergentes en nuestro distrito, y nos hemos informado sobre las excelentes oportunidades de formación profesional disponibles para nuestros hijos. También hemos asistido a una presentación del Departamento de Educación Migrante sobre los numerosos servicios disponibles para las familias migrantes.
This year, we have had two meetings and have learned about the percentage of emergent bilinguals in our district and heard about the amazing CTE opportunities available to our children. We have also had a presentation from the migrant education department and about the many services available for migrant families.
Los miembros de nuestro comité anticipan como interés asistir a futuras reuniones y dirigirse a la mesa directiva. Les agradecemos su continua colaboración y apoyamos nuestro trabajo juntos para educar a nuestra comunidad de estudiantes de inglés. Gracias.
Our committee members look forward to being here for future meetings and addressing the board. We thank you for your continued collaboration and support as we work together to educate our English learner population. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Y muchas gracias por todo lo que hace de parte de los aprendices de inglés. Y bien hecho.
All right, report by Suzy.
Oh, we still have more.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Charlie Foster?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Johnson. My name is Charlie Foster, a parent of Kate Foster, president of San Marcos FFA Program. I also want to urge the board to reconsider moving the floral design classes at San Marcos High out of the Agriculture Department. This is the only horticulture class at San Marcos High, and removing it from agriculture would take away the opportunity for two hundred students who are passionate about plants to be in the FFA program. I've seen the benefits of FFA for both my daughter and other kids in the program, including those who are passionate about horticulture and not just animals. Floral design is fundamentally art of design and retail management in agribusiness applied through a floral lens. As mentioned previously, students in the SMHS floral design class do not just arrange flowers. They learn hard science and technical skills, financial and inventory management, and customer relations and service. This class definitely prepares students to be future-ready. Removing this class from the established agriculture pathway limits opportunities for students, like the competition the FFA students are at this evening. I would again urge the board to reconsider moving floral design classes out of agriculture. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And to that point, I do want to say that I have received a lot of emails, and we've all read them. Staff will be following up with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Self?
Sorry, I just wanted to say to the Foster family, I had the pleasure of meeting your daughter before coming to this meeting.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Self, and I currently serve as the Regional President for FFA in Southern California. It is my understanding that this board is considering taking floral design classes at San Marcos High School outside of the agricultural program. I must challenge that. Not all CTE is equally comprehensive. Ag education is based on the three-ring model of classroom instruction, involvement in FFA leadership, and supervised agricultural projects. This model provides students with invaluable agricultural knowledge and leadership skills, the opportunity to practice what they've learned in a risk-free environment, and opens doorways for those students' futures. By cutting or replacing the floral program from the ag department, you are depriving two hundred students of those opportunities. When I first stepped into an ag class, I was frankly shy and unmotivated. But in that ag class, I found hands-on learning experiences that taught me confidence, passion, and gave me purpose. I then had the opportunity to expand on that through ag projects, where I learned veterinary skills, conducted scientific research, and even interned with the University of California. Through involvement in FFA competitions and conferences, I learned how to repair machinery, develop marketing plans, speak publicly, and debate respectfully. I also learned how to work with others, and most importantly, put service above self. All of this led to a big door for me in receiving a full tuition scholarship at any university I choose. This is my journey. But hundreds of thousands of FFA members across the nation share similar and unique stories like this, including the ones at San Marcos High School. Research from Purdue University shows that involvement in FFA and ag projects is linked with higher academic success, stronger career readiness, and even higher standardized test scores. Another study by the same university shows that FFA members report FFA involvement was a large reason why they continued to show up to school day after day and were committed to their academic work. FFA alumni overwhelmingly report that FFA has shaped their careers, with most now working in agricultural areas and/or holding senior-level positions in the companies that they work in. Although an additional business CTE pathway may very well be beneficial to the students at San Marcos High School, these floral design classes provide students with knowledge of the floricultural industry, business practices, and priceless experiences in FFA and supervised ag projects. Members of the board, please do not take those opportunities away from those students. Maintain the San Marcos High School floricultural pathway within the agricultural department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Denise Godfrey?
Good evening. Thanks so much for having me. And that was really hard. It's gonna be tough to follow up. But I'm here also to just talk about the importance of the ag floriculture program. And I think normally I'd be with your daughter Kate and judging, but this was far too important to let you know what exactly I've seen. So my name's Denise. My parents started a nursery fifty-two years ago. I run and manage that nursery. And we've been in San Diego County and the Fallbrook area. I have to tell you, I love my job. And I love seeing the joy that flowers and plants bring people. I grow smiles. I grow happiness. And I've had so many opportunities to share that with, you know, the different FFA people that have toured my place, and the questions and everything else. Looking at Crystal Lauren Stephanie, there are so many times I go to attend their meetings, they're always there, you know, after hours, trying to learn more, trying to get back to their students. And if they grow anything, they grow people and citizens that are ready to contribute to their community. The leadership experience grows to the confidence, poise, and articulate young people, grounded in core values. I'm so sorry. These students have developed for themselves these, you know, just intrinsic, what's right, what's wrong, what they need to guide themselves, you know, that compass. And it's so cool to see, you know, what happens after that. You know, they have that strength and that, you know, they aren't fear, you know, they go into a situation completely fearless. They don't worry about failure in new situations. They have the courage to speak up and the kindness to help others. Citizenship, our community, needs to grow and thrive. FFA is not about the future farmers of America. It's about nurturing America's future. I think that's one thing that's so tough is like this was, something was created back when, you know, one in four people, five people were on the farm, and we're, you know, one point two percent now. So maybe FFA needs a rebranding. But if we're talking about the foundations of, they're working in the classroom, and as Kyle mentioned, you know, they have all these neat experiences outside of the classroom. And, you know, to have that kinesthetic, you know, just ability to go out and do things is just so important for how people learn. And just like you said, you know, they get excited about, you know, school, being there, and it's just like, I don't want to see that kind of stuff go away. And through the nurturing of plants and animals and people, they're becoming...
It's time. I'm sorry. You want to email us what you were about to say?
Can I just like?
How much?
I'm just like...
How much more do you have?
Maybe thirty seconds. I was going to say that they become more self-aware, empathetic, while building trust, actively listening, verbal, non-verbal communication, working together to learn the basics of coaching and participating in courageous conversations. And rather than diminishing the impact of FFA to two hundred-plus students, let's get the kids more involved.
Thank you.
We've talked, we've talked, I think about the nesting doll. Did we talk about the Russian nesting? Okay, so I'm gonna nerd out for just half a second. The, um, the best structured organizations out there are structured like those Russian nesting dolls. And for a school district, that looks like the little, the little doll in the middle is teachers and kids in their classroom. That's the whole reason we exist. If we don't have that, we don't have a, we don't have a, a school system. In many school systems, all those little dolls are all taken apart and they're all just sitting all separately. But in a system that is what they call tightly coupled, then they're all nested nicely on top, uh, one inside the other. What that means in practice is that all of the other, all of the kind of backend or the not necessarily in the spotlight, departments and functions of a school district all know and are intentional about their support of teaching and learning that's at the core. They're not just sitting off doing their own thing. So I wanted to, I wanted to highlight that because whether it's risk or it's purchasing or it's MNO or it's transportation or CNS or whatever, all of our backend business departments really understand that and embrace that. You're gonna hear a little bit of that tonight. You're gonna hear a little bit from Marisa. Now, we did have to cut her slides down from about seventy-eight slides to whatever we currently have. I've never met anybody who loves risk more than Marisa. So we were, Suzie might have to put the timer on for you too. But I want you to hear some of the really amazing things she's done and particularly how Marisa gets that poster up there and how she supports our schools so that they can do the things that they need to do in that poster and do it in a safe and sustainable way. So that's my little preview and I probably already just given like half of your, your presentation brief. And with that, I want to thank our board with Thanksgiving coming up here very soon. I want to thank our board for your unwavering support of our district and our strategic promise and all of our staff, our teachers, our support staff and our administrators for all the good hard work that everybody does every day. I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has them.
Any questions? I just, I did have a chance to pop by Nob Hill and Woodland Park. Just because I'm really excited about the construction. So I just kind, Nob Hill, you can kind of just walk around and see, you don't really have to go inside. Woodland Park, you have to go inside because it's like in the back. And it's really exciting to see the, how quickly things are changing. And I'm, I'm incredibly excited about, I didn't know what that QR code was, so I'm really excited to do that next time I go. So I can see it. And again, I, I think yes, happy Thanksgiving to, to all of our staff and our students and families.
I love.
Sorry. I was gonna say, Andy, you're getting sappy, so I'm gonna get sappy back. I will say that I'm super thankful for you and your whole cabinet. I know all of you worked tirelessly for the district and a lot of that work is behind the scenes and unnoticed and unseen by families and students and people in the community. And I just wanted to publicly thank you and tell you I am grateful for all the hard work that you guys all do.
I was just gonna ask, I would really love to see a presentation by our peer counseling program in the future, not anytime soon, but I guess when they collect their own data. To see how many students they've supported and how they've worked with the counseling department as well and their support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, President Ahmad and members of the board. I'm Amy Sinella, the proud principal at Nob Hill Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Katie Zuber, the assistant principal.
I'm Brenda and I'm a fifth grader at Nob Hill.
Nob Hill Elementary is a school-wide Title I school currently serving about seven hundred students. Our campus serves preschool transitional TK through fifth grade and two extensive needs classrooms. This year, our school-wide focus, I should probably switch the slide. There we are. Our school-wide focus centers on ensuring that every student experiences a welcoming and inclusive environment that fosters a strong sense of belonging and positively impacts learning. We are also emphasizing high-quality differentiated small group instruction in reading that's aligned with grade level standards. All of our TK classrooms this year, our classroom teachers rather are being trained in GLAD, which will help us to strengthen instruction in reading, writing and vocabulary. So at the end of the year, we will have all of our teachers TK through fifth grade GLAD certified. Very exciting and we're so grateful for this opportunity. This program will be very beneficial to all of our students, especially our emergent bilingual students. So here are some additional pictures of our school rebuild. We are super excited that we've completed phase one. You see a photo here of the demolition. This was a demolition of our library, our multipurpose room, as well as our cafeteria. So unexpected, a little bit of tears, like there's so much excitement, but it was kind of bittersweet to see the buildings go down. It was, Nob Hill Park is right above, so lots of families, lots of excitement through the summer with people just coming, taking photos. So it, it's very, a very exciting time to be a part at, of Nob Hill and be a HAWK. Phase two will be completed December of next year. So that's what's being built right now, two two-story buildings. So this, around this time next year, we will be moving into our TK classrooms, our first through fifth grade classrooms, our music, library and our STEAM classrooms, as well as the servery where our students will be served for breakfast and lunch. So we are being rebuilt and we have a bright new future. Even as our school undergoes an exciting rebuild, we've made it a priority to keep our traditions alive and to find creative ways to celebrate them. Our pep rallies are still going. We now hold them in the classrooms and our families are invited into the classroom and we do those virtually. So we're keeping our school spirits high for all of our students and our school community. We recently hosted an annual Halloween festival. We do that every year. And it was a huge success that highlighted our strong community connections. We're also building some new traditions like student performances that we are offering to our families at some of our neighboring schools. And we're sharing our HAWK pride beyond our campus. In January, our beloved Booster-Thon Jog-a-thon will take place in our front parking lot. Instead of obstacles, we'll have lots of bubbles. So through all of the change, our traditions, old and new, are continuing to bring us together and to make Nob Hill an amazing place to be. Our theme for the next two years is Together We Build, Together We Rise, which perfectly reflects our current journey. We're literally rebuilding our school while continuing to learn, grow and thrive together. Building a new campus in the middle of a functioning school is not easy, but our staff, our students and our families have shown incredible teamwork, resilience and patience. Our community is fully invested in this process and we're supporting one another. We're also embracing the San Marcos Unified School District Portrait of a Graduate, preparing our students to be curious, collaborative and future-ready. The photos here capture some of the energy and creativity that we see on campus. You see my friend touching the wall. That is a mural that all of the students in, that are in the relocatable portables, they got to put their handprint on the wall. And as, it's, it's fun watching them as they go by, they, they actually high-five their handprint. It's adorable. So it's just a bright spot in what would have been an otherwise somewhat dreary hallway. You see some of my friends in TK with the paintbrushes, they are actually selecting colors that they would like to see in their future-ready classrooms on the walls. And everywhere around campus, you see students that are building things, things from their lunch with like straws, they use Jenga pieces, building blocks. So they're, they're mirroring what they're, what they're seeing through these viewing glasses. So while challenges do exist, we have some excitement as well. And Verinda's gonna tell you a little bit more about that.
At the start of the school year, our STEAM lab was buzzing with excitement. Our STEAM teacher, Ms. Orsini, wanted to connect student learning to the real world construction happening.
Can we get our mic, can you get closer to the mic, sweetie?
All around them on campus. During those first few weeks, every grade level explored engineering design and creativity through hands-on building projects. Our TK student built their own schools out of magnet tiles while kindergarteners created colorful construction art. Our first and second graders took it a step further by designing construction machine with moving parts. They were so proud to see their creations come to life. Meanwhile, third to fifth graders read If I Built a School and learned about the roles of structural engineering and architects. Then we became architects ourselves, designing our own dream schools. Our drawings were combined into maps of our dream school, which are now proudly displayed in classrooms. These projects not only connected to our rebuild theme, but also sparked creativity, curiosity and excitement for learning across all grade level.
Thank you.
Here is a picture of our classroom I developed with my partners as part of our school architect project. You'll see the usual elements like the teacher desk and student desk, but we've added some exciting, engaging areas to enhance learning and creativity. These includes a craft station, a science lab, a sports corner and even a movie theater area. Space is designed to inspire exploration, collaboration and fun. At the top left-hand corner, there's a movie theater. And then at the bottom left-hand corner, there's a baseball area. And on top, there's a science room with red tables and blue chairs with the door. Then at the bottom, there's a craft station with the long table and blue chairs. Then we have a huge teacher desk and a yellow desk and, and green couches for the students. Then there's an elevator at the bottom with the door. One of the ways we foster a sense of belonging at Nob Hill is through student leadership in grades four and five. This year, we have one hundred and twenty student leaders who take on a variety of important roles around campus. These include safety and peace patrol, lost and found organizer, kindness crew, kindergarten breakfast helpers, STEAM and library helper, student advisory council member, you, and even new student tour guides. I serve on the student advisory council and kindergarten breakfast helper. We meet with Ms. Sinella and Ms. Zubert regularly to talk about how things are going at school and to give ideas to make our school a better place. To ensure students are prepared, each student completed a job application and went through training for their Pacific role. This process not only teaches us responsibility and teamwork, but also empowers us to take an active role in shaping our school community. Our student leaders are an example of how our school helps us students feel connected, capable and valued as part of our school family. Last but not least, I'd like to thank Ms. Sinella and Ms. Zubert to give me this opportunity. Thank you everyone.
Thank you, Verinda. Spotlight on PBIS. PBIS is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. It's a framework to create positive, safe, equitable school environments. This slide represents some of the projects that we completed at Nob Hill beginning last year. Our timeline began in September twenty twenty-four. We sent a team, myself, a school counselor, two teachers and a parent to San Diego County Education, Office of Education, sorry. And we completed five trainings. We developed a PLC for our classified staff as well as our certificated staff. Our county coach came to our school site and we completed what's called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. So it's basically a checklist and gives us a baseline of what PBIS looks like, where we begin and where we should end. At the end of the school year in May, we had our second TFI inventory and we were able to complete some of the projects that are up here in a little bit. I'll describe. The first part is our behavior management system. We revised this, so we received staff input. We, at our PLC, we looked at what behavior looks like in terms of defiance as well as disrespect. We created this matrix and we outlined on the left an action plan and different levels of infractions. Next part, our HAWK's matrix. This is our matrix, so our expectations are be safe, be responsible, be respectful and be kind. So in each area of the school, we have labeled different actions of what expected behavior looks like for bathrooms, classrooms, hallways, eating area, because we don't have a cafeteria currently, playground and dismissal. In addition to that, one of our projects was completing a parent handbook. So within this handbook, there's a general explanation of what PBIS is. And then within the tiered triangle, there are tier one, two and level three supports that families can understand where they are and potentially where they need to go in terms of help with their children. Next is our conflict resolution wheel. We, because we don't have a playground, we are trying to make sure that students are advocating and solving their own problems. So we have utilized this wheel in our PE classes on the playground and our noontime supervisors have a pocket-sized chart that they can carry around to intervene and help students solve problems. We have implemented acknowledgement systems, so we encourage students to be safe, be respectful, be responsible. They earn tickets, they can earn pizza part, uh, pizza party, they can shop at our prize cart and they can earn extra recess. Another intervention that we utilize is this year, we created a golden ticket. So for our specials, STEAM, PE, music and library, we have the teachers nominate a class of the month that is exhibiting positive behavior and our expectations. And last, we created a school-wide reflection sheet to build continuity and consistency. We wanted to ensure that in the primary grades, students would be able to draw, if they cannot write, to explain their behavior, what happened and how it impacts themselves or others. Upper graders are expected to write and reflect on their behavior. Next is ICANN. ICANN is new to Nob Hill this year. It is Improving Chronic Absenteeism Network. It's through San Diego County Office of Education. This has been a wonderful opportunity for our school. We created a team again with our counselor, a clerk, community liaison and myself. Our goal is to improve attendance, improve a sense of belonging, build and build partnerships with families. So we created goals. Again, we attended a training at the County Office of Education in July. So last year, our data was, was nine point six chronic absenteeism. This year, by the end of the year, we expect to be at nine point one percent. Our current chronic absenteeism rates has been floating around four point four and seven point two. So we've already met our goal. We want to sustain this. We've been doing exceptional the last couple of weeks. But Veterans Day was a difficult area, so we, the absenteeism rate increased. We have tier one and two interventions for this program. So we're utilizing data to create focused students. We have thirty focused students. With these focused students, we are sending letters home, making phone calls, completing home visits, providing backpacks and also providing resources for families. And a few successes to note. Right before parent-teacher conferences, so October third, we reduced our absences by half. And then Veterans Day weekend compared to this year and last year, we had an increase. However, we improved from last year. So this year, we had thirty-seven absences. Last year, we had forty-two. And then on November twelfth, so right after the holiday, this year, we had twenty-eight absences. Last year, we had forty-two absences. In terms of grade level chronic absenteeism, our TK students are at twenty-seven point three percent. Our kindergarten classrooms are at six point nine percent. First grade, four point four. Second grade, nine point one percent. Third grade, six point six percent. Fourth grade, one point nine percent and fifth grade, five point seven percent. Lastly, I just want to thank our staff and our families for sending their students to school and our staff for creating the legwork to create opportunities for kids to be motivated to come to school.
So we will continue to work hard at maintaining traditions and strengthening our sense of belonging at Nob Hill, even in the midst of our construction. We've also been focusing on family engagement. It's important for us to involve our families because we want to make sure that they're connected. And because we have to change some of our events, it's, know that we're keeping that at the forefront, our family involvement. This year, we've had three principals chats, all with record parent attendance. We've done these in years past. I think at the fourth, at the first one, we had maybe forty people in attendance, which was amazing. And to support our transparency with our families about our construction projects, we've invited Tova Corman, our executive director of facilities, to each of those parent chats. And she's had the opportunity to answer questions, which I know our families have very much appreciated. Our partnerships also remain strong with Mission Hills High School. We had many of the students that are on the Grizzlies football team and cheer team come, I say come back because seventy-five percent of them, I knew them, although they look different, like I, I'm like, they look different in these photos. So it was a very exciting day just to have the kiddos come over and join our students and encourage them. We also have Mission Hills High School students that are in the CTE Child Development Program that will be supporting our, our students, our classrooms. Fifteen students, most of them are returning HAWKs, giving back to their school community, which I love. So we're also proud of our PTO partnerships. This year, PTO is funding the Fit Kids Program, which typically is an after-school enrichment program. Our PTO is funding the Fit Kids Program to come in three days a week to provide structured activities for our students with our limited space. So we're very, very thankful for our PTO. Through all of this, our focus remains on community, creativity and connection, keeping our school spirit and our sense of belonging strong. Thank you. We appreciate your, your, you listening and thank you to our family that came out this evening.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Verinda, for a great presentation. I hope we can, you know, incorporate some of your ideas in the new classrooms, maybe.
I just want to say that I think it's amazing how you guys are making lemonade with the lemons, you know? Just all the creative ways you're incorporating building and engineering, like it's the perfect opportunity to just embrace it instead of like fighting it and you're modeling resiliency to the kids and it's phenomenal. So thanks for the presentation. Adaptability.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, next we have Strategic Promise Update Goal Number Two, Community Schools by Mandy Bed, uh, oh God, I'm gonna, Mandy Bedard, Principal on Special Assignment and Adelita Gonzalez, Community Schools Coordinator. Did I butcher someone's name? Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Board President Ahmad and esteemed members of our governing board and superintendent's cabinet. We are incredibly excited to share the powerful work taking place through our district's Community Schools Initiative. My name is Mandy Bedard and I serve as a principal on special assignment in our Ed Services Department. My work centers on strengthening our district's multi-tiered system of support for each and every student. As part of this effort, I have the privilege of collaborating closely with our Community Schools Coordinator, Mrs. Adelita Gonzalez, who is co-presenting with me this evening. A cornerstone of our work is how it builds and deepens relationships with our families and the broader community. We are also honored to be joined tonight by one of our SME parents, Mrs. Anna Lilia Lopez, who will also share her perspective as part of this presentation. As we share SMUSD's journey, it's important to begin with a shared understanding of what a community school is. The California Department of Education defines a community school as a whole child's school improvement strategy where districts and schools work closely with teachers, students, families and community partners. The Coalition for Community Schools expands on that, describing it as both a place and a set of partnerships between the school and community resources. Its integrated focus on academics, health, social services, along with community engagement, leads to improved student learning, stronger families and healthier communities. In essence, a community school is the heart and hub of its community. Our district's Community Schools journey began in twenty twenty-one, as Dr. Johnson alluded to in his update for this evening, when we first explored the model and engaged with potential sites where student needs were the greatest. And in May of twenty twenty-two, San Marcos Elementary was awarded a Community Schools Planning Grant, launching a year of collaboration between the site and district to conduct focus groups and a comprehensive needs assessment. The findings informed our implementation grant application, which was successfully awarded. During the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, SME continued to refine the implementation plan based on data and stakeholder feedback. As Dr. Johnson shared earlier, we are thrilled that SMUSD was awarded a second implementation grant for La Mirada Academy, which began its first year of implementation this school year, while San Marcos Elementary entered its thirds. Community schools are grounded in and guided by four core pillars that together form a comprehensive strategy for strengthening student learning and development. The first of which is Integrated Student Supports. Student success is achieved by meeting their academic, physical, social, emotional and mental health needs. The second pillar, Family and Community Engagement, involves actively tapping the expertise and knowledge of family and community members to serve as true partners in supporting and educating students. The third pillar, Collaborative Leadership and Practice, establishes a culture of professional learning, collective trust and shared responsibility for outcomes that includes students, families, staff and community members. And the fourth pillar, Expanded Learning Time and Opportunities, includes academic support, enrichment and real-world experiences that extend learning beyond the traditional day. With these pillars as our foundation, I'm now going to turn it over to Adelita, who's going to share how these four pillars are being brought to life across our San Marcos Unified Community Schools.
We're excited to highlight some of the offerings and partnerships within our Community Schools pillars, beginning with Integrated Student Supports, the foundation for ensuring every student's basic needs are met. In partnership with True Care, we launched monthly onsite mobile health clinics providing comprehensive medical and dental care, immunizations and flu shots. Since the start of the school year, two hundred and fourteen students have received services, resulting in improved attendance, increased self-confidence and greater participation in athletics. We also address food insecurity through partnerships with Feeding San Diego and North County Food Bank, ensuring consistent access to fresh and nutritious meals. So far this year, SME has distributed two thousand sixty-four meals, with services continuing year-round, including during school breaks, because we know how vital this resource is to our community. The Family and Community Engagement pillar is a critical part of our Community Schools model. When families are informed, connected and supported, students thrive. We offer family learning seminars on topics such as emotional well-being, the importance of attendance and establishing home literacy routines. These sessions help build confidence and empower families to take an active role in their child's education. In partnership with San Marcos Adult School, we also host evening ESL classes at SME for parents and caregivers. We currently have thirty-five adult learners enrolled and forty percent are simultaneously pursuing their high school diploma. A powerful example of multi-generational learning and the lasting impact of family engagement. This deepened trust and shared learning leads naturally to building family leadership and capacity, which you'll hear more about from Anna Lilia. She will speak first in Spanish and then she'll translate her experience to English.
Cuando llegó la iniciativa de Escuela Comunitaria a San Marcos Elementary, hubo un cambio drástico en la manera en que yo como padre de familia veía y participaba en la educación de mi hijo. Al ser parte del grupo de voluntarios en ILAC, en la distribución de comida y el comité de escuela comunitaria, pude adentrarme más en el conocimiento educativo de mi hijo. Fui empoderada con capacitaciones profesionales como Street Data que me ayudaron a fortalecer mi capacidad de liderazgo para apoyar y... para apoyar y animar a otros padres de familia que al igual que yo están interesados en el bienestar educativo de sus hijos. No es fácil educar a un hijo. Por eso es necesario una comunidad unida para cubrir todas las áreas de necesidad que rodean a nuestros hijos. When the Community School Initiative arrived at SME, there was a drastic change in the way I, as a parent, view and participate in my son's education. Being part of the volunteer group at ILAC, in the food distribution, and the Community School Council, I can dip deeper into my son's educational journey. I was empowered with the professional training such as Street Data that helped me strengthen my leadership skills to support and encourage other parents who, like me, are interested in the educational well-being of their children. Raising a child is not easy, which is why a united community is necessary to cover all the areas of need that surround all children.
Thank you so much, Anna Lilia. Our third pillar, Collaborative Leadership and Practice, ensures that students, staff, families, and partners all have a voice in shaping our school's vision. We strengthen relationships and belonging through restorative justice practices, training for both certified and classified staff. This evidence-based strategies support morning circles, student restorative circles, and family circles, helping build more, a more connected, school community. SME was also selected to join the inaugural Street Data cohort, a year-long professional learning experience led by author Shane Seffir. A team of teachers, parents, partners, and administrators worked together to address chronic absenteeism and belonging among 4th and 5th graders using empathy interviews and focus groups. The team identified key insights that now guide current actions. Additionally, both sites participate in the Improving Chronic Absentee Network, ICANN. Weekly attendance site meetings focused on data analysis and implementing research-based strategies, ensuring continuous improvement in our systems of support. Our fourth pillar, Expanding Learning Time and Opportunities, creates meaningful and engaging experiences during and after school. We have broadened our after-school enrichment offerings, including STEM programming with Cal State San Marcos, academic tutoring, and cultural programs such as Ballet Folclórico. These experiences help students explore interests, develop new skills, and envision future pathways. During the school day, students engage in real-world learning through partnerships like the Poseidon Vallecitos Water District Educational Program, where they collected data and learned about engineering and environmental careers. Our partnership with La Jolla Playhouse provides access to professional theater performances and a Q&amp;A sessions with actors and technicians, offering many students a first-time experience in the arts. At SME, we also launched a hands-on garden science class aligned to the next-generation science standards. This experience integrates environmental learning, sustainability, and academic contact in meaningful ways. Through these expanded opportunities, students grow academically, socially, personally, preparing them to be truly future-ready. The Community School pillars directly advance our district's strategic promise by ensuring future-ready system. Expanded learning and integrated student supports cultivate innovative, enriching experiences that develop future-ready students. And collaborative leadership and strong family engagement build the inclusive, relationship-centered, cultural essential for the future-ready learning environments. Community schools are the strategic promise in action, advancing equity, belonging, collaboration, and whole-child success. Thank you.
Before they sit down, the board may recall that at the Welcome Back this year at San Marcos High, I highlighted a couple of faces of future-ready students. One of them was a student named Miraya, who is now at Berkeley studying Quantum Information Science. Adelita's mom, proud mom, so I wanted to, you weren't there that day. Remember, she was driving her, right? So I wanted to highlight that. Congratulations. How is she doing?
She's doing great. I can't wait for her to come for Thanksgiving, though.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Adelita, I know how much work you put into this. I've been to many of the events and you're always there. This, I wish we could do this at every school. I really, truly believe in the community school model and that it is what ideally every school would have to provide what that group, that neighborhood group needs for the students and also for the community members. I'm always surprised, I don't know why I'm constantly surprised, when I go that there are community members who attend these events who might not have kids in our school, but they still need access to the resources that we make available to them. And it's something that I'm really proud of, specifically because I firmly believe that these are taxpayer-funded buildings and resources for the entire community. And being able to use them in that manner that you do is something that you should be so proud of, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you to your whole team. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number 7.3, Risk Management Presentation by Marisa.
Board, it is my pleasure to introduce Marisa Evans. She's our Director of Risk Management. For many, the topic of risk management can conjure up thoughts of liabilities, complex legal issues. But Marisa truly flips that script. She views her role as proactively safeguarding our entire community and ensures that every student and staff member is as safe as possible every single day. She's a trusted resource that many of our staff across the district have on speed dial and knowing that she will drop everything to provide thoughtful assistance whenever and wherever her expertise is needed. So with that, Marisa, please share with us more about the Risk Management Department.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Johnson. I'm very excited to be here this evening. Dr. Johnson is right, I do nerd out on risk management and we did have to dwindle the presentation down. So I will do my very best to give a snapshot and overview of our department information, responsibilities and objectives, workers' compensation overview, and what our program structure looks like for property and liability insurance, and then the various programs that we oversee and have developed in the Risk Department since our department has been created. And then the positive changes that we've made in collaboration with peers, not only in leadership, but our administrators at the school sites and teachers and students. So with that, we'll move right on. In this picture here, you'll see my small but mighty team who is here in support. So we have Maria Elena Ramon in the audience and Uretzi Deluerta. I'm truly honored to work with these ladies. They're extremely passionate about risk management, so that makes me really excited because I get to share my passion with them. So we provide support in a gamut of areas, not only in workplace safety and employee training, injury and illness prevention, but to name all of the things that I do or that we do as a team, it would take me the rest of the evening, and I don't want to keep you here that long. But we strive to create safe learning environments for our students and our staff members, investing in what matters to them, partnering with our leaderships and site admin, create safer environments for all of our students. And so 18,500 students, we're a little over that today, and over 3,400 staff members. So very proud of that. And we also help create the volunteer program for the school district and then our parent community. So comprehensive insurance oversight and our asset management overview is also in our purview. So just effectively ensuring what we have as our assets for our 27 district-owned sites, the bus and white fleet, and all of our associated content within those facilities. So various realms of what we do for Joint Powers Authority Insurance Pulling, it's a very complex dynamic. I won't bore you with all of that. So health and safety compliance, regulatory and program oversight, some of the things that we created since risk management was created back in 2021 as a department was our drone management program that's compliant with the FAA, our ADA Compliance Service Animal Program, chemical management and inventory, science, chemical hygiene, OSHA compliance, and so much more. Emergency preparedness, we play a vital role in that, and also community and program support. So our PTO presidents, I had the pleasure of working with a lot of them in past years with Dr. Johnson. And so PTO presidents reach out to me and ask for resources about their insurance coverage, what kind of activities can they have? So I'm more than willing to help support all of our PTOs because they do great things for our school sites. So just to give you a snapshot of our program structure for workers' compensation, on the left is our prior Joint Powers Authority. One of my goals in coming to the district is to evaluate our insurance program and find out how we're transferring our risk. So identifying it and prioritizing it. One of the things that I thought that was important is that in the prior JPA, you'll see at the first $100,000, we were responsible for every single claim filed. When we transferred over July 1 of '22 to the new JPA, we belong to the PIPs program now in the Joint Powers Authority, we've transferred that risk completely at the first cent of each individual claim, meaning that our future financial liability is protected on the claims filed from July 1. So some of the things that Risk Management has done since we made that switch is board policy and administrative regulation updates, our return-to-work program, very effective, and returning our staff back to being healthy in their environment, what they were hired to do, and support kids. And then rigorous and accurate tracking of leaves for our employees. So it's accurate, they're aware of what's happening in the process, and so we support them through that. Just some highlights and key takeaways for you. Since July 1 of '22, when we made that switch, we've eliminated that coverage where we're responsible for the first $100,000 of each individual claim. So SMUSD has transferred $2.1 million in risk over to a Joint Powers Authority Insurance, and that number is counting every day. 7-1-22, moving forward, created the Effective Return-to-Work Program, made those changes. So there's been a savings of $353,000 related to that and counting, that number goes up daily. From 7-1, transferring the Interactive Process Meetings. We, the district used to consult with a third party to perform those meetings, and we've transferred those in-house to Risk Management. So we perform those in collaboration with our Human Resources Department, and that savings is $107,000 since we've made that change and counting. And then I think the big ticker is that as of 6/30/2025, we've reduced workers' compensation claims by 26.62%, comparatively speaking, to the old program structure and the old JPA. Liability coverage, same scenario here on the left, prior JPA. We were responsible for the first $100,000 of each claim filed against the district. Moving over to Southern California Relief, the new JPA as of July 1, we are only responsible for our MRL, which stands for Member Retained Limit, or as most of us know it, as deductible. And we're also insured up to $75 million per claim rather than $50 million. Making that switch over is a $310,000 savings in annual savings and premiums for coverage. That's a $1.24 million saved to date. We have broader coverage and we have additional coverages. Insurance coverage has increased nationwide, which I'm sure all of you are aware of. Your homeowner's insurance is probably impacted by what's happening nationwide. So the SCR members, the district members, all are experiencing an 18% to 20% increase in those premiums. But San Marcos Unified, our increase was only 6%, which reflects in a strong program performance and a reduction in our losses. So we're lower than the majority of the member districts in SCR. Property coverage, same deal, first $100,000 on that left-hand side. On, for SCR, we are $50,000 deductible, and then we transfer our risk completely for each individual claim. We have broader coverage, we have additional coverages. I think the important note here is that we now have a, every five years, we have an asset management assessment, meaning that a third party comes in, goes through our facilities, identifies every piece of property that we have, and we're insuring for its current market value, and that really does matter. That report is also utilized by various departments in the district, including maintenance and operation and facilities that assist them as well. So Risk Management oversees restitution and recovery for any claims that are filed for property loss. We manage third-party recovery and responsible for external party and insurers, and we support departments in coordinating repairs and after the incident and putting their content back into the classroom so that they can get back to doing what they do best. So my world isn't all about insurance, even though I'd love it. I will talk about the other things that are really exciting. Typically, Risk Management has a stigma of being the no department, and that is not the department that we are at San Marcos. So one of the great things that I love to do is go out and spend time with our employees that have high-hazard occupations, and how can we help support them? Ergonomics isn't just about someone sitting at a desk for eight hours a day or a teacher's desk in a classroom. It's also about the body mechanics of what these people do for a living, day in and day out. So a good example is, I noticed during our mechanics visit that we have some folks that leave lug nuts and different various metal objects on the ground that roll underneath the bus. So now they have telescopic metal picker-uppers that will help them with that, so they're not crawling underneath the buses to get those types of things, and kneepads, and various things that we've identified that can help prevent work-related injuries. Grounds employees, they are using a lot of tools that vibrate, just like leaf blowers and weed whackers. So we purchased everybody anti-vibration gloves, and it prevents them from having wrist injuries and the pain that they were having. So just a couple of examples. The Risk Management Team also plays a vital part in emergency preparedness and response for the district. In '23-'24, as part of a big initiative, we worked with our EOC co-partners for Emergency Operations Command Team and our nursing staff and provided in-person stop-the-bleed training at all of our sites. '24-'25, we did emergency evacuation equipment for our two-story facilities, and then just moving it here to the North County Regional Education Center in collaborations with SDCOE, leading that for our school sites and what evacuation looks like. So this is just a couple of those pictures to give you an idea of what that is. Various committees and teams that we participate in, this is a small list, but I had to dwindle it down because it looked too busy. So we're on the Emergency Operations Command Team. Risk Management also runs the emergency reunification process. In the event of an evacuation, our team deploys and we work with sites so we can get kiddos back to their families expeditiously as fast and as safely as possible. We're also on the Safety Implementation Subcommittee. So all the great things that you see happening out at the school site, we sit on that committee to help do the things that we have this vision for safety on for our schools and our teachers and our students. We're also, I'm also in the Site Safety Assessment Team, and then I'm on the SMUSD and SDCOE Emergency Response Team and the Traffic Safety Committee. So some things that come to Risk Management may seem out of the ordinary, but I get these innovative calls from principals, like, hey, Marisa, can we do something like a skate club? And I'm not going to default to no, we can't do that. It's like, how can we do that? And this is going to take some time, but we're going to work the logistics and we'll figure it out. So we did that for Woodland Park, and then I get a call from San Marcos Elementary that says, hey, Marisa, can we make this applicable to 4th and 5th graders so that they can transition? And I said, absolutely. So now SME has their skate club, and they love it. They love it. I got to see it recently. So parking lot assessments also to address student safety. Sometimes I'll get phone calls to say, Marisa, I'm really interested in you coming out to do an assessment on traffic to help improve pickup and drop-off. And so we created a Safety Traffic Committee, and now we will be looking at all school sites to help improve that. This is one that we've worked collaboratively with on, with our CTE program and VAPA program. But this is a very typical classroom environment. It's very busy. You've got six periods of students and their projects. It is extremely busy. So when I do site walkthroughs, I am a person that doesn't go in and say, hey, teacher, right? Is there something you could be doing? No, let me help you. So we identified that. And we, this past summer, this was my big takeaway for the summer is that we went from an environment that is extremely busy to turning it into something that is not only conducive for learning, but also conducive for teaching. And we had a great relationship with the teacher in this environment. The students were part of it. In fact, the day before the end of the school, or the beginning of the school year, we went in and the student said, can you please come and be our guest speaker? Because we want to learn more about OSHA and safety. So now we're partnering with the rest of the CTE programs at Mission Hills right now. So now we're partnering with the rest of the CTE programs at Mission Hills right now. And I think part of that is, once we start this process, the teachers are very interested in integrating that compliance component because when these kiddos go out into the world, learning all of these pathways, they'll have that added addition of knowing about compliance for OSHA and the Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Environmental Health, and things of that nature.
Do some of our kids receive OSHA cards when they do training through their CTE classes?
Not yet. No, that's a great goal. I love it. And so I think that's all I have for you this evening, except for our goals moving forward, some of our focus points. We're going to be conducting, well, actually, it's already underway for Mission Hills High School, but CTE and VAPA Classroom Safety Assessments. We've done safety assessments for CTE and VAPA at San Marcos High, and we still have VAPA at Mission Hills High, but we've done CTE there. And we're going to be making a lot of positive changes. In collaboration with the teachers, it's really important for us to understand what their vision is and what they want these kiddos to walk away with. So doing the right thing for our students so that they're future-ready. And then we're going to be completing a comprehensive district-wide mapping program. We just finished over two hundred base maps for all of our school site locations. So this will help enhance safety and emergency preparedness district-wide by building some consistency and also continuity for the district to have a platform ongoing into the future. Providing compliance support for new state senate and assembly bills. So I'm on those various teams for all of our new ones coming up for 2026. And then Risk Management always has a daily goal of continuing to support staff for the success of our students. Program improvements and everything that we do in Risk Management is not possible without the collaborative efforts from leadership and administrators, teachers, and even the students. So I just would like to leave you with one of my favorite quotes by Henry Ford. Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. So thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate being able to share.
All right, report by board members. Does anyone have anything they would like to say or report?
I just have a quick, oh, sorry. I'm on the Lions Club, I think, I don't know if everybody knows that. But one of the projects that we do is a piece poster contest. And so I had reached out to the principals and Nikki worked with her art department. And so San Marcos Middle submitted like over a hundred. They did, it was awesome. And she, you know, she talked more about like really liking to hear about the community engagement projects like that. So for Lions, they do, that's for middle school is the piece poster. And then in high school, they do the student speaker contest. So they'll come and talk to us about that, I'm sure, coming up. So they're really good programs to kind of integrate the community with. And the other thing I'm trying to do with them is, John came to talk last month or the month before about really bridging the gap between our older population in San Marcos and our younger population, because, you know, having that benefits both. Our younger people learn from our older people, and the older people, you know, they, they live fuller lives with the, with the younger people. So we're trying to work on something that can also help with that.
I think John has a few options. I think there's a few students that reached out to him, too. So my daughter participated in the Lions Speaker Contest, and that is a very good program opportunity. Stacy, did you want to say something?
No, I think I've been saying it a lot.
Okay, Andreas.
I was just going to say, I wanted to thank the city of San Marcos for the partnership, especially with the e-bike. I watched the council meeting the other night, and I appreciate the messaging and the work that we have together with our information officer, Christine back there. But anyway, thank you and Dr. Johnson and our cabinet for maintaining that positive relationship with the city. And just other than going to that wellness center, bravo to those kids. I loved it. It was awesome. Wish we had that in high school.
Yeah, I got to visit the wellness center before, I think right before they started constructing it. I didn't get a chance to go at this time, so I do want to go visit. I think it's an incredible space for our students, and the fact that it's being run by our students is even more amazing. Speaking of our students, the Ability Fair, I didn't get to go this year, but it's one of, if you guys have not gone, I always recommend that you attend that Ability Fair. And then I just want to, I think, Suzy, next tomorrow, we have two playoffs, right? So good luck to the teams. And then this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving break. And I will echo Heidi's message to the staff and our teachers and also our classified staff. Thank you for everything, our families, and of course, our students who make us so very proud every day. So thank you for that. All right, action agenda. Oh, wait, we have one thing.
She left. I just wanted to, well, we'll tell her when she comes back. Jennifer Machado works up in my office, and she has decided to move to Montana. So she, this will be her last board meeting. She usually sees her quietly in the back, running the livestream in the Zoom, the Zoom Live or the YouTube Live or whatever it is we do for the livestream. And I said, I would like to recognize her and have the board smile at her, and she left the room. So we'll make sure we tell her when she, yeah, that's okay. I suppose she's allowed to use the restroom, but yeah, just wanted to highlight that, when she comes back.
There she is. Thank you, Jennifer. We will miss you. You'll have to share pictures of your home in Montana. Thank you. All right, action agenda nine point one, Board Approval to Hold the 2025 Organizational Meeting of the San Marcos Unified School District Governing Board on December eleventh, 2025. Andy?
Yes, Education Code requires that the board adopt the date of the annual organizational meeting at the regular board meeting prior to the organizational meeting, which must be held between December first and December twentieth, 2025. It happens every December. This is the organizational meeting where the board will elect a president, vice president, and clerk for the 2026 calendar year. So the date for the organizational meeting of the Governing Board of San Marcos Unified is proposed for December eleventh, which is our next regular meeting.
Fantastic. So do I have a motion to approve the, or holding the 2025 Organizational Meeting of the San Marcos Unified School District Governing Board on December eleventh, 2025?
Second.
Who, who was it? Okay. Moved by Member Herrick, seconded by Member Martine to approve the organizational meeting of 2025 as presented. Student board reps have left. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number nine dot two, Student Expulsion Case Number one dash twenty-five dot twenty-six. Tiffany?
The board has heard the details of this case in closed session. Staff recommends approval of expulsion case number zero two twenty-five dot twenty-six.
Sorry. Thank you for listening.
All right, just a correction. This is Student Expulsion Case Number two dash twenty-five dot twenty-six. Okay, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Student Expulsion Case Number two dash twenty-five dot twenty-six?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Meem, seconded by Member Martine to approve Student Expulsion Case Number two dash twenty-five dot twenty-six. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, nine dot three, Approval of Amendment to Employment Agreement for Superintendent. All right, the Brown Act requires that the Governing Board, prior to taking final action on an employment agreement, to orally report a summary of recommendation for the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in form of fringe benefits for local agency executives. The superintendent is a local agency executive, and a proposed contract amendment is before us this evening. There are no changes to the current term of the agreement or any revisions to previously approved salary or other benefits. However, the proposed agreement, if approved, would require the district make an annual contribution into a 403B account for the superintendent in the amount equivalent to the IRS Code's maximum amount or deferable compensation capped as set in 2026 from this point forward during the term of the agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the employment agreement for the superintendent?
Make that motion.
And I'll second. So moved by Member Martine, seconded by Member Ahmad to approve the amendment as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Do we have, do we have to sign it right now?
No. Okay. All right, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda for Discussion Purposes? I'll second. Moved by Member Carlson, seconded by Member Ahmad to approve the Consent Agenda for Discussion Purposes. Is there any discussion? Okay, moved by Member Carlson, seconded by Member Ahmad. Student Board Representatives are no longer here. So all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Informational Agenda, eleven dot one, Quarterly Report of Financial Disclosures for the period ending September thirtieth, 2025. Erin?
The Government Code requires school districts to disclose its investments quarterly to the Governing Board. Tonight's report is for the quarter ending September thirtieth, 2025, when SMUSD had a total of three hundred and forty-eight million dollars of funds invested in various accounts. One point two million was invested in various FDIC insured bank accounts. Also had thirteen point seven million dollars invested in accounts related to our various CFD and Financing Authority accounts to be used for facility and construction purposes only. The majority of funds on deposit, almost three hundred and thirty-four million dollars, were invested with the San Diego County Treasurer's Schools Investment Pool as required. The investment pool earned an annual interest rate of three point seven six percent for the first quarter of this fiscal year.
Eleven dot two, Revisions to Existing Governing Board Policies, BP three five one five Campus Security, BP three five one five dot four Recovery of Property Loss or Damage, and BP three four zero thirty-four hundred Management of District Assets and Accounts. Erin?
Business Services is bringing three board policy updates for review tonight, and these will be brought back to the board in December for final approval. First, Board Policy three five one five Campus Security is being updated to reference the Department of Homeland Security's Behavioral Threat Assessment Guide and states that the district may form a multi-disciplinary team to identify and manage potential threats, which the district already has in place. Board Policy three five one five point four for Recovery for Property Loss or Damage is updated to reference current parent guardian liability limits for the costs of damages caused by their minor child. Additionally, it clarifies that debt may not be collected for damages caused by a student experiencing homelessness or a foster child. And Board Policy thirty-four hundred Management of District Assets and Accounts is being updated to expand the dollar limits for asset reporting and for capital asset tracking and inventory reporting in our financial statements.
Thank you. All right, eleven dot three, Revisions to Existing Governing Board Policy, BP one three one two dot one, Complaints Concerning District Employees. Joel?
Yes, good evening, board members. This informational item includes recommended revisions to Board Policy thirteen twelve point one. As President Ahmad mentioned, complaints concerning district employees. The proposed revisions clarify that complaints will be investigated by the superintendent's designee with appeals routed to the superintendent for final determination. The updated language also outlines new options for how the superintendent reviews appeals, including determining whether to uphold the designee's decision without hearing the complaint, appointing an appeals committee, or hearing the complaint themselves. Additionally, the revisions introduce the vexatious complainant provision, allowing the superintendent or designee to dismiss complaints from individuals who have filed multiple unsubstantiated complaints within the preceding four years. It's important to note that the existing policy language stating that any complaints about the superintendent are to be submitted directly to the Board of Education remains unchanged. This is an informational item with a plan to bring back in December for recommended board action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, eleven dot four, Revisions to Existing Governing Board Policies, BP six one four two dot seven, Physical Education and Activity. Tiffany?
Educational Services is recommending an update to BP sixty-one forty-two point seven, PE and Activity. This update would allow student athletes in grades ten through twelve to receive up to twenty credits in PE by successful participation in regular school-sponsored CIF athletics done after regular school hours. Of note for the update, all students are required to take PE in ninth grade and will remain. Students with access to an athletic PE that is connected to their sport, for example, football PE, basketball PE, are not eligible for this option. This policy update will be brought back to the board next month in December for final approval.
Thank you, Tiffany. All right, with that, we're on to our closing items. The next meeting of the Governing Board is the organizational meeting and will take place on Thursday, December eleventh, 2025, at six thirty PM in the Media Center of the North County Regional Educational Center, two five five Pico Avenue, San Marcos, California, nine two zero six nine. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Good night.